Call this meeting to order. 7:07. Please stand.
Public hearings. Public hearings due to the life of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we get a roll call please.
Certainly. Commissioner Layton. Commissioner Jimenez.
Present.
Commissioner Ten Eyck. Commissioner Berisi. Commissioner Irons.
Present.
Commissioner Salata.
Here.
Chairman Kane.
All right. And to approval of minutes. Can we have a discussion on minutes? The last meeting of August 17. Hearing none, can I give a motion to approve minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the August 22 minutes as presented.
Got a motion to approve the August 22 minutes. At second. Any more here? We get a roll call load on there?
Certainly. Commissioner Jimenez.
Yes.
Commissioner Ten Eyck.
Abstain, I wasn't here. Uh. So you're right, I'll answer your second today.
Right.
Yeah.
And we only have four, so we either need an affirmative or we need to table it to next month.
You just go table, I wasn't here and I shouldn't have seconded it. My apologies.
Okay, so are you withdrawing your second?
Yeah.
Okay. So with her having withdrawn her second and identifying that she's going to abstain from voting, I'm gonna make the recommendation that we table this item and put it back on next month's agenda unless there's any objections from the planning commissioners.
I don't have any objections, you can't put forward with it, so.
Okay.
Sounds like this now is gonna be tabled next month. All right, public hearings.
So I will help here in this process, yes, yes, so. Well, this is normally stated by the chair, neither our chair or vice chair are here, so with some indulgence, I will handle this more formal portion. So we are initiating the public hearing on A, the local file number is A-BDC-22-C1002. This proposed amendment to the Boardman Development Code, Chapter 4.1, Types of Applications and Review Procedures, will change appeal timelines, add a category of owner, and accomplish other minor housekeeping changes. The applicable criteria for changes to the Boardman Development Code are found in Chapter 4.1, Section 4.1.600, Type 4 Procedure. The hearing tonight will be conducted as follows, the staff report will be presented by myself. We will then ask for public testimony in the following order. Since the city has initiated this, there is not an applicant, so then we will ask for any testimony in support of the application, any testimony opposing the application, any neutral testimony, and then if a need for any applicant or in this case city rebuttal, we'll then close the public hearing. After the record is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard unless the planning commission asks some specific questions. They may ask questions of staff and then at that point they can discuss the matter and make a decision. They may make a decision tonight on the matter or they may continue it to a time and date certain in the future. We have established a tentative second planning commission hearing date as October, and I'm not gonna remember it off the top of my head. It's the third Wednesday in October, I believe it's October 19. We do have two testimony forms that have been filled out, I'm assuming they are both for this action. Well, one says development code, the other one says building codes, but I will assume they mean the provisions that are in front of us tonight. If you wish to speak, thank you for filling out the testimony form, if you have not yet and you wish to, they are over there where the signing sheet is. The chair will still recognize that people, or the Ethan Salata functioning tonight as the chair, will recognize people wishing to speak, any questions should be addressed to the planning commission members through him. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium, which is in the back there, as the hearing is being recorded and for ease of people on Zoom to hear. Please keep testimony concise and to the point, testimony should be on the action under consideration and address the subjective criteria. If anybody on Zoom wishes to testify, please indicate your desire in the chat and we will capture it there. The criteria that apply to the decision are listed in the staff report, testimony on other issues will be rejected and not considered by the planning commission, failure to raise an issue in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission and the parties the ability to respond to the issue, prohibits an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Similarly, failure to raise constitutional other issues regarding the conditions of approval, of which there are none in this case, insufficient detail to allow the planning commission to respond to the issue prohibits a lawsuit in Circuit Court on that basis. So now we would ask if the planning commission needs to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. So for those of you that are in attendance, has there been any conflict, contact, or are you aware of any bias or conflicts of interest?
No.
No.
Okay, hearing none. Does anyone participating in the audience wish to challenge a planning commissioners impartiality in this, in this matter? Thank you. Okay. So I will now present the staff report. For the two of you that are in the room tonight with the packet that's at your station, please reach to the last three pages of the packet and pull them off, it says preliminary findings at the back at the top, and move it to where we are. That is the staff report. So the request here is to amend Chapter 4.1 Types of Applications and Review Procedures to initiate an update to the Boardman Development Code that would address inconsistencies with practice, conform to Oregon or by statute, and Oregon administrative rule, and implement recent interpretation of the Boardman Development Code concerning the definition of owner. So just to be clear, the party initiating this review and update is city. Even before coming to work for this city, it was real clear to me that there were a number of parts and components of the Boardman Development Code that need to be updated. And the more I've, the more time I've spent here in my role as planning official, it just becomes more and more clear. I have conversations regularly with people who want to develop or accomplish something and there's parts and pieces of the code that bluntly could be seen to be in conflict with each other. There are things that are unclear. And so you've gotta start somewhere. And given that one of the first actions that happened when I arrived here was the decision around the transmission line that was opposed by Utah Electric, and the city made an interpretation of owner, that was kind of the place where I started, and that happens to fall in Chapter 4.1. And there are some other things that came out of those multitude of appeal processes that were as I read the code, there are just provisions in there that, that it was like, okay, we need to, we need to think about this and look at this. What I wanna say is that for the planning commission members, these are suggestions, this is me with some experience around how codes should read and how they should flow, making some suggestions and the planning commissions should certainly take this under advisement. Feel free to continue this to October 19th. We can think about it, talk about it some more before we make a final recommendation to the city council. And I'll walk you through that, the proposed changes and why I did what I did, why I'm making the suggestions I have. So again, the applicant here is the city of Boardman. There's not been a comprehensive review for a number of years with any recent changes to the development code, having a very narrow scope, so this is kind of the first of what I hope to be many changes to the development code. I kinda wanted to start with, I probably should've started with something less controversial, but I thought, why not just get it out there and be done with it? We need to start somewhere, this is the place to start, so here we are. According to the development code, and this is something that I think we should have a conversation about and potentially change in the development code, but this chapter is actually the chapter that governs how we do this. And so the decision-making considerations that are required is that the recommendation by the planning commission and the decision by the city council shall be based on consideration of the following factors, and there are three of them. The first one is approval of the request, approval of the request is consistent with the statewide planning goals. And of course, there are a number of them. The two that I looked at specifically were Goal 1 and Goal 2. Goals 3 through 14 are not really invoked specifically in this chapter. None of those goals can be of consideration when we look at other parts of the development code for update, like Goal 10 is housing and it would have application when we look at our residential use zone, that kind of thing. Goal 9 is the economic, economic development chapter, and it would have implication to when we looked at maybe our commercial or industrial use zones. Goal 14 is urbanization and it may have applications to certain chapters, but for this, this particular chapter that deals with process and procedure, it's really about Goal 1, which is citizen involvement, and Goal 2, which defines how land use planning happens in Oregon. So Goal 1 is really, really challenges cities and jurisdictions to have a community involvement program, to encourage community involvement, to provide notice, to hold a public hearing, you know, a variety of things that, that reach out to the community, and our code requires that and we have done those things. The changes that were, the changes that are proposed will not affect involvement, but my intent was to clarify process, remove requirements not being utilized, and address changing the number of days to submit appeal from 14 to 12 to ensure that Boardman can meet 120 day requirements. We got very close in the appeal process processes that we recently did, meeting those, there is 120 day requirement that the city has to accomplish, including all local appeals and approval for a local decision in 120 days. Two days doesn't matter, it could, it could. Goal 2, ask communities to establish a land use planning process and policy framework as a basis for all decisions and actions. So this chapter, Chapter 4.1, does provide the framework to how decisions are made, and so therefore I believe Goal 2 is applicable in this particular case. The end of the day, I think we're compliant with both Goal 1 and Goal 2 as we move through this process. The second criteria that's in the development code is approval of the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And there again, I look specifically to Goal 1 and Goal 2 because that's what I had invoked in the first one. Goal 1, the comprehensive plan, the Boardman comprehensive plan has five Goal 1 citizen involvement policies, all which support citizen engagement, and I think the proposed changes would be found to be consistent with those policies. There, for Goal 2, there are eight policies. And I specifically called out Policy 3. The policy states the city has adopted the City of Boardman Development Code, and unified zoning and subdivision land use code to facilitate the development process and implement the land use goals of the city as outlined in the comprehensive plan. And I think we're to continue to be consistent with that particular policy statement with these changes. The third one is the property and affected area is presently provided with adequate public facilities, services, and transportation networks to support the use of such facilities, services, and transportation networks are planned to be provided concurrently with the development of the property. So this would be a standard that would be applicable if our action, if our modification or our amendment was related to a property, and this is not, this is related to code itself. So it doesn't specifically apply. So in some respects, this criterion can be found to be not applicable. But I added a couple of additional thoughts here. Another, another component or another proposal in the document that we'll get into here momentarily is a thought that you should contemplate replacing city manager with planning official throughout, throughout the document to better identify the responsible party relative to implementation of the Boardman Development Code. And again, here I also say address the term owner related to who can make application, so because this is a, and again, we'll get into specifics of those proposals when we get into the document itself. So because this is a post acknowledgement plan amendment, we're, we're making a, a change to our development code or our comprehensive plan or our map, in this case it's the development code, we are required to provide notice to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, that was on August 23rd. Legal notice was published on September 6th in the East Oregonian. This hearing was advertised in the East Oregonian. And then again, we've got hearing dates to this evening, tentatively if needed, October 19th, and then the city council will identify it in the findings as November 1, is as I understand, being potentially changed to November 8. So city council is shifting their council meeting date. I, I've gone for two weeks on vacation and I don't know all the story behind that, I was just asked if moving it to the 8th was okay, and I said, yeah, it works for me just fine, so. That is a summary of the staff report. I wanna now go into the actual document itself, so it's a redline version, and what you're seeing is okay, why is, well, we're not ever open here. Okay. So again, I'm just gonna kind of work through this. There are page numbers, they are a chapter, page number, page numbering system, so it's 4.1.1, the last number being the page number. Making the changes has shifted some of the page breaks in here, and so there's a blank page here and there, and there's also some pages that are half pages. That would be fixed upon adoption of the final document. So right off the bat on page 1, the proposed change is striking city manager and replacing it with planning official. That's certainly something that can be discussed and debated both with this body and with the, with the city council. It would be a change here, it's a change that I would recommend be done over time to the entire document. The city has invested in a planner for 20 years. Many jurisdictions call out the planning director, whoever the lead agency is, as the responsible party in the development codes. In counties, it's required under the law, because counties are required to have a planning director under the law. Cities are not compelled in such a way, so it is, it is, you can see many versions of how that's done in different, in different city codes. The other thing I would say is that as we go through this, I've been here for about seven months, give or take. And I certainly have read through this and said, this has been problematic, this has been problematic, this could be problematic, we're not doing this. But if there's things that you as planning commissioners are aware of, that you think when you read through this is, is concerning, now is the time, as we go through this, to bring those up, because you may be aware of something that I've not yet stumbled over. So let me know where you stumbled in the past, or where you think the program has stumbled in the past. The bottom of page 3, the requirement under the law is the city shall send ODOT notice of all type 2, 3, and 4 land use applications and traffic impact study applications in interchange management areas, we don't have to send them to ODOT for things that are happening in, in the middle of a residential district. But we do if it's in an interchange management area. So that, that clarification has been added. And I'm gonna skip over the things where it's city manager, planning official, and there's a number of those. Oh, I found a couple of titles in here as well, and I tried to capture those, but again, as you're reading this, if you find some that I didn't capture, please, please call me out. So on page 4, there's two of those, in E1D, entities should be entitled. And then in number 2 near the bottom of page, there's, there's two of them. Mailing and seeing should be mailing and posting. And show the date of the nice should be notice. So again, these are, you know, fingers didn't work when they typed this the first time. So the first date change happens on page 5 near the bottom where it says time for filing. And we shifted that from 14 days to 12 days, 12 days is the statutory requirement. Then we'll get to the bottom of page 7. That particular item that we have, that I have said to strike is because we don't do that, I mean, we do what's required, we send the notice. But the requirement here is that the application or the applicant is supposed to include one set, set of pre-stamped and pre-addressed envelopes for all real property owners of record who will receive a notice that the application is required in section, so on and so forth. We do that as staff, we generate the list. We do the envelopes, we do the stamps. The city currently does not charge for that activity. There are jurisdictions that do charge for that, Utah County, if you want to do an action, they will bill you the application fee plus, at the conclusion, they will bill you for their notice costs, publishing and mailing. But, but we do this function, and striking it does not mean we won't do it, we are required by law to send notice, and that's what we're talking about later in the notice requirements. So I propose to strike that. I think we're gonna move a few pages here before we get to the next proposed text change. But again, if any of you have anything as I'm working through this, please speak up. That same change happens again on page 13. We're striking the same, the same provision.
You want the things as we go through?
Yeah, you want some of them.
Or you wanna come back to them?
How, well, why don't we do it this way, why don't, why don't I go through and then I'll go back?
Okay, that's what I was doing, okay.
Okay. Um, there's an item on page 14 that I'm not wedded to one way or the other, but kind of in the middle of the pages is all property owners of record within 250 feet, that's been struck, 100 feet of the property line of the site. Statute is 100 feet, I'm not opposed to 200 feet, but I think it's a point of discussion. And, and it's a policy decision to some degree, and your recommendations to the city council will, they will then review that. I don't have a problem leaving that at 250, but I wanted you to know what, what the options were there, and so contemplate that, think that through. So then at the top of page 15, so, and I actually should probably go back, there is a requirement to post to post information about the hearing on the property. So Boardman has a unique posting requirement that, so it's on the top of page 15, it says at least 14 business states before the hearing, the applicant shall now again, this says the applicant shall post. We do the posting, again, this is, this is what does the code say versus what practice is set. So I've added the words, allow the city to post notice of the hearing on the property for subsection 2 below. And then again, striking applicant and adding city, the city shall prepare an affidavit of posting of the notice which shall be made part of the administrative record. So that's changed a little bit, and as I see that, I'm, I may have missed the other place where that posting requirement is. There may be other places in here where we need to make the same changes, so I need to make a note to sell on that. And again, there, there are spacing issues, and those will be, those will be fixed at the time that we finalize the documents. Oh, okay, somebody's hard to see. Page 22, just about notice of hearing, it says 10 copies of a letter or so this is about application requirements again. And this is another thing that I probably need to make sure I go back through and capture all the places that this is at. But in this world of electronic production, it used to be that when somebody submitted an application, particularly in a, in a situation where it might be a zone change or a a large development, the application packet might be 250 pages long. And cities and jurisdictions require that the applicant actually provide 10 copies. Mostly so the jurisdiction didn't have to reproduce that for each of you, so there would be one for staff and there would be one for each of the planning commission members. That's what that's about, we don't require that. We require them to submit something, you know, their application, their narrative, but we're not requiring them to submit 10 copies. So again, I need to double check and make sure I captured that in all the places that would be applicable. And I know we're getting pulled up to the owner, the older items now, so, yeah, page 25. Don't went off quite to the owner yet, okay. So what I did in this decision-making consideration, so this is on page 25. And you'll recall when I went through the staff report, I said, this is what's required. And it's pretty limited. And so I'm making some proposals here about how to amend that to make your review of these types of things a bit more robust. So the first one, I'm saying approval of the request is consistent with statewide planning goals and the applicable provisions to the Boardman comprehensive plan. And basically combining 1 and 2 into 1. And then 2 are replacing with evidence as present showing coordination with appropriate state agencies regarding the statewide planning goals. So in some cases, you should be talking to Department of Land Use and Land, Department of Land Conservation and Development, or the Oregon Department of Transportation, or maybe Department of State Lands because it's a wetland issue, or, or, it could be any number of state agencies. And so when you're making a major change And so when you're making a major change to your comprehensive plan or to your development code, you should be coordinating with those state agencies as you're going through this, the process. And this is just showing that that's happened. So whether it's the city doing it, or somebody making an application, you want to show that they have either already engaged in that state agency coordination as the applicant, or that the city has engaged in it as the proponent of the change. I left two, two, it would, would be renumbered to three, and the numbering changes are not accurate there. But again, that would be a formatting change that would be affected at the end. I didn't change two, but I did an and and added two more provisions. Amendments to development code or, or zoning map which significantly affect a transportation facility shall assure that land uses are consistent with the function, capacity, and level of service of the facility identified in the transportation system plan. This is accomplished by one of the following, and there are three alternates there that are proposed. And then the, the last one is a plan or land use regulation amendment significantly affects a transportation facility if it, and again, there's four different items there. Now, why have I included this? To be compliant with the transportation planning rule, our code is not in this, in this respect, because this language should be included. Or language similar to this, where we're evaluating transportation and transportation impacts. So what this really does is it, is it adds four new pieces, or three new pieces. It adds that we're having, that we're showing, providing evidence that we are coordinating with the appropriate state agencies. We're still looking at public facilities and transportation networks. But the transportation networks, we've added a different additional information so that we're showing that we're compliant with the transportation system plan. And in the end, if we're consistent with the transportation system plan, we should be consistent with the transportation planning rule, which is a state rule that we have to comply with. And I'm happy to get into detail in that if anybody has any questions. Record of the public hearing, so now on page 27, about just beyond its underwears as record of the public hearing. Again, this gets to practice and process. In today's world, in some respects, we are keeping a verbatim record because we are recording these on Zoom and posting them to the city's website, where at this point, as I understand it, they're going to remain indefinitely. That may change if it becomes cost prohibitive to do that, at which point the city may need to remove the recordings from the website after a certain date, you know, more than a year old, more than two years old. So, but we're also not required under the law to keep a verbatim record. We have to keep some kind of record of the meeting. That's why somebody is usually here taking notes and you approve minutes. And under the current law, pre-zoom, you could record your meeting. Once your minutes were adopted and approved, you did not need to retain the recording of the meeting at that point. So what I'm trying to get to here is that a record of a proceeding shall be made by electronic means. It is not necessary to transcribe an electronic record. The minutes and other evidence presented as a part of the hearing shall be part of the record. So we still may work that a little bit before we, before we get to the end. But again, here I was trying to get to what's required, what's practiced, and what makes the most sense. And again, that same, that same language is reflected at the top of page 28. When we get to page 29, we start the process where we start talking about who can initiate an application, how do applications start? And so just a little bit of background there. Applications for approval of this chapter may be initiated by the city council, the planning commission, the planning official, a record owner of the property. Again, minor change in number four from what it currently says. And then in five, an entity that has the power of eminent domain related to the property. So the the decision that was made in the transmission line proceedings. And a lot of this started before I was here, so I can only and because Barry's no longer here to ask questions of, I've asked other staff and I've made some assumptions about what happened up to that point. But what the record tells me is that UEC made application. They had authorization or approval or an easement, some kind of authorization from the landowner to move forward on, with the project from all of the landowners with the exception of one. And that, and that was the Talman property. The UEC had identified early in their process that they would potentially have issues with this particular line. They went to the Public Utilities Commission and they received a certificate of need, which under Oregon law gives them the right of condemnation. So they withdrew the portion of the application that was on the Talman property, and they pursued approval for the other properties. Having their certificate of need in hand, they pursued condemnation on the Talman property for the easement that they needed. Upon receiving that approval, I don't know what the right decision is, but that, that decision or determination from the circuit court, they came back and made application, providing the circuit court decision as their evidence of right to that property. The city accepted that application and those documents, and moved forward with the approval process for that. Issuing a staff decision which was appealed to this body, and then subsequently appealed to the city council, and is now at Luba, in the Luba process. And as I understand it, oral arguments have been concluded, and we're waiting for a final order for Luba. So that's the first piece that we're looking at there. I am not going to stand here and tell you that we've come up with the best way to do this, but the city council made an interpretation, and I think it's important if we're going to do this, that we incorporate that interpretation in some way into our development code to reflect that. Um, the, the change continues on page 30, just above the middle part of completeness. The signature of the applicant on the required form. So again, this is the acceptance, when the application is received by the city, we have to determine if it's, if it's a if it's complete, and if we have what we need. So what we're looking for when we do that is the required form, the required fee, and then the signature of the applicant on the required form. We've added to this, if the applicant is the agent of a person or entity authorized to initiate an application, the applicant must provide evidence of authorization by the applicable person or entity. So we had some previous language, and we struck some of that and changed it and added some additional language. And again, I'm not saying this is the best language, but it was our, kind of our first cut of that. Um, and I think, I think we may be getting to the end of the changes as, as proposed, but we've got a few more. A few more pages here, so. Yeah. Oh, okay, very last page, there was another kind of typographical error where community impact wasn't identified as a B, but it was kind of formatted like it should be a B, so we, we added that. So I think given the request from Commissioner Tenai earlier, I think our best option now would be to kind of take, go through this again, and I know that both Commissioner, let me remember, Commissioner Irons and Commissioner Jimenez are both on Zoom. Have any other commissioners joined by Zoom? Okay. Let's see. No, Zach is also out of, out of town, so he's also double booked tonight, so there we go. I think we've got what we're going to have for this evening. So I'll walk back through this, and if there's any changes that any other commissioners, if you have a question, if you want to get into a little more, if there's something you think I missed, if you saw a typographical error or other procedural item that you think we should address in this process, let's work our way through it and do that now.
Do you want to do a little public piece of it first, so the people can go if they so choose, or you want to?
I want to do this. I want to, I want to get through this, because if they want to make a comment, I want them to make comments on anything we may may be thrown out there.
That's fine, okay. On page 4.1.1, you probably need an and or an or after the semicolon.
So help me get to where I got.
C, type three, procedure, wise judicial, you have a semicolon. You probably need an and or an or there before you get to.
To D.
Type three or four.
Is D the last one?
C is.
D is the last one.
It is.
Okay.
Then I would suggest that in D, staying on that same page 4.3. Um, in the last sentence of D, do type four matters are considered initially by the planning commission? And then it just says with final decision made by the city council. It doesn't say really why it's the planning commission. I would say with recommendation of the planning commission. You know, so that you know that there's something going to the city council from the planning commission.
Yeah, that might be some, some more explanatory language can be incorporated in there.
So I didn't have a lot of time to draft, um, a lot of language. Um, let's do this real quick, just, you have a lot of this planning official or his or her designated me. Some places you have designated me, some places you don't have anything. I don't see any reason, you probably should change all of that to even consistent, take that page her, just the designated me, but do a global replace, find and replace. And just designate me, okay? Um, let's see, the other thing is, oh, some places you have planning commission lowercase, some places uppercase, the same, you think was city council. That's a high, you know, global find and replace. Also, if you're going to, I don't know what the procedure is here. Numbers under 10 typically are written out. Some places, there's three in one place is number, a numerical number. Other places, five is a, is for snap. So consistency, I'm all kind of about consistency. So I would do a find and replace on that as well.
Okay.
Um, okay, so page 4.1.4. If you draft this out of how it works. Um, 4.1.3, C, D, and E are very confusing. Let's start with E first. Notice of decision, within five days of the planning official signing the decision, signs the decision, a notice of decision shall be posted on the property and sent by mail to the following people. Okay?
Okay.
So there you have five days. The final decision, if you go back up to C, final decision shall be final on the date it is mailed or otherwise provided to the applicant, whichever occurs first.
I, I see where you're heading. I see where you're heading.
Then the second date is the day after it's mailed, or the applicant is getting noticed. But you have this funky five days thing down there. So if you, if the person signs it, the planning official signs it on the 5th, but it doesn't get mailed out until the 7th, then it's all wrong.
Right.
So that needs to be.
I see your issue fixed, yes, good catch.
Um, you also kind of have the same problem if you go to page 4.1.5. Um, with F now, you have as a type one administrative decision, you just find it for purposes of appeal when it is mailed by the city. The timeline administrative decision is effective on the day after the appeal period expires. If an appeal period is filed. Anyway, it's just all your, the dates and the timing is really confusing.
Yep.
And it took me, I spent like 45 minutes writing it all out and trying to figure out really what was trying to be, being handled. Then I don't know if at some point, go back up to my apologies, we are in 4.1.300, E3, little E, a statement that the applicant and any persons who are adversely affected or agreed by the decision may appeal the decision. Who, who is that? The world? The, you know, I don't know if we need some definition there or what you want to do. Um, but that needs to be looked at, because it's a very broad term. And then you have that down in G as well, that language. Any persons who are adversely affected or agreed. So you have that language in a couple of places, so they want to define that or limited, I, I don't know. Um, but certainly it needs to be looked at.
Okay.
Um, okay, down in G, staying in G, 2. Um, little B, you have the 12 days of the date the notice of decision was mailed. It may not necessarily be mailed to an affected or a adverse or affected or agreed person.
Right.
So where do they fit in there, or how do they get? So that probably needs to be looked at there as well. There's a lot of inconsistent just, or terminology.
So that, that agreed person that's outside of the system.
Yeah, there is.
There is a funky allowance in the law that they can come in at a later date.
Yeah.
As, as long as they can show that they have maybe appeal within so many days that we can be aware of the decision, they can still appeal. So it's hard to account for that, it has code provisions, but we know it is allowable in law, so that's a good question.
And, and you can always reference where that is in the law so that it, it helps to cover you.
Right.
So if, if one is interested. Um, okay, 4.1.300, I think this is still under G. It is G3. Determination of filing fee, the amount of filing fee shall be established by the city, the maximum fee for an initial hearing shall be the city's cost on preparing for conducting the hearing, or the statutory maximum. I understand a statutory maximum, I, I, there's got to be some better language.
No, it's actually set by, it's set by fee schedule, so we'll, we'll.
But it should be a fee, that's the right moment, there should be some type of fee schedule.
There is.
Not just that, hey, it took me three hours and I charged, you know, 500 or an hour at the state.
Yeah.
It should be a fee schedule, was where I was kind of trying to go.
Right, that's the appeal, okay.
But even if you don't want to set an amount, there should be something like copying, or this amount, or this amount, or, you know, for this task. So to at least clean up that language a little bit, when you're ready.
Yep.
Um. Okay. Okay, there's some, so down to six, final decision and effective date. There's some really good language over in 4.1.400, G.6 that as in, let me go over to it. Whatever, you can get there maybe faster than me, G points. 400, G.6.
Which page? 4.1.13, near the top.
Oh, okay. Um, just like flush out that language, oh yeah, a little more after that, city unless appealed to the city council. An appeal to the city council shall follow the same notification and hearing procedure as for the planning commission hearing. You might look at that, I don't know if that's true, but if it's true, it probably needs to be in one place, if it's not true, it needs to come out of that session.
Right.
So you need either one or the other.
It gets really confusing in here, I agree, yes, yes.
So, yeah, so if um you could review that, that would be great.
Yes.
Um, I think in um go back to the four point one point three hundred, um seven A, I think that's G seven A.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Parenth two, in parenth, um any person who was mailed, person noticed of type three. I think it seems to be that um other places, appeal decision is capitalized. So if you could do a a re, you know, a look and replace.
Yep.
Um. Oh, and there, yeah, there, you're gonna do that, um. Oh, on page four point one point nine, in section four point four hundred, C. Let's see, D, E, E one, A, little A, and little C, they say the same thing. So.
Sure enough.
I think that was just copying, yeah, so we have, so that needs to be revised.
Yep, okay, so. Yeah.
That is about as far as I got with a really detailed review, and I will do more. Oh, overall, and this just might be your formatting issue you mentioned, four point one point thirteen page. Um. Four point one point five hundred, um capital B, two little A, B, C, it just need those, those just need to be flushed when you reformat.
Oh, yeah.
That's just a a formatting issue.
Yep.
That can be caught later. Oh, and then you see, when you do your final replace, you may not catch this one, um the B one in that same section of application requirements, there's nothing after the planning official. So you may not pick it up when you do your replace.
Oh.
There's nothing there, because if you go look up or designated, it's not, it probably will not catch it.
Or.
That or designated is not very um there. Then I think in, this may be wrong, four point one fourteen, um on that page, C, capital C. I think this is starting with notice, um mailed notice, notice of a type three application hearing of type one. Because the next section, type, when you go to um, to the next section says to, and I don't think you um twos, two twos, if that makes any sense. Um, let me stop and quiet it quick. When you get to the um. Well, this loop had it, you'll see, I think the next one where you have notice of a type three application hearing or type two appeal hearing is in the next section.
Right, I know.
So I don't think you need type one, I think it's type one, and then the next one is a type two. But if you meant two type twos, then it it would be wonky. So.
Are you looking? Stage four point one point fifteen?
Maybe.
Section two versus content of those, or?
Um.
The end of those, if you have type two administration, and then it says that three administration.
Yes, probably, notice of appeal of a type two administrative decision or a type three hearing to be mailed.
We should be consistent.
Yeah, you just need to figure out where that that um issue is. Um, okay. Um, now, do you need to, top of um page four point one point fifteen? Um, here is the first time I saw, um and like I said a few pages ago where I stopped up and made real details. But here you put fourteen business days. Do you wanna put business days behind everything, or is this the only place where you're gonna deem business days?
Uh.
Do you have no definitional section?
Right, well, there are places where it is fourteen days.
So. Correct.
Um, and but that's quite, because this is actually.
And then other days, then this was, like I said, this was the first time I saw business days.
Well, what's interesting about this, and this may be business days. But we're gonna be mailing notice on a business day anyway, so we would be posting it. I I think business days should come out, I think this works better.
Yeah, either needs to come out or it needs to go in everywhere.
Because the posting process is again, not a required process, it's a process the city has chosen to do. So we can choose to do it however we want, because we have chosen to do it. Um, so I think it's best if business day, if it's just fourteen days, okay, thank you.
So anyway, that just needs to be reviewed. Um, sorry.
No, you caught some great stuff again.
Oh, years and years of drafting. Oh, okay, this was the other thing you need to double check, um. Some places pre-application is hyphenated, sometimes it's one word. So. Okay, page four point one point twenty-two, up at the top, C. This is application forms. Type four application shall be made on forms provided by the city or designated. I think there's supposed to be a period there, not a semicolon.
Yep.
Now, I have to apologize, I did not get to review, I did not get back as far as four point one point twenty-seven. So, page, um, so I don't have a lot of comments there. Oh, I do have a comment on four point one point twenty-seven. Um, capital K. Um, you might wanna look at, I don't know, I think notice of decision, should we capitalize there? Maybe not, but you might look at that.
I don't know if it's been.
I know, I did it, and that was the first place I caught it, and I can always go back and look, and you can just do a find and replace. Um. L, capital L, I think these I think these are inclusive, that one and two are inclusive, so there should be an and. And then I think a period after, at the end of two. So that then you say the official record shall include all, but you can just look at that, it it.
It's a really long list, because three is a list all by itself.
Correct.
I see that.
So that's what I was saying, and one and two are really ands, and then you define official record includes
Yeah.
these things.
Or just a period, period, and then the end.
Sure.
Yeah.
Whichever way, if you can just look at it, that would be.
Yep.
I appreciate it. Um.
I need to call my good friend Mary, who's a technical editor.
Okay, so my other question now, four point one point twenty-nine.
All right.
Page, sorry. Okay, um, D on that page, applications, one. Um, little A, parenth, four, and parenth. Um, you have a contract purchaser with written permission from the record owner. Are you deeming that that's a memorandum contract? Because if a memorandum contract is that, they're still the the owner of the land, but there's a memorandum, a contract that they are holding in order, but you should, it it doesn't seem like they should, since the owner is still the um person that the contract holder is buying the property from, that they should have to get the permission of um. Which very nice, thank you, are you understanding, are you?
I'm there, yes.
Yeah, the memorandum contract, the property is still technically owns to, oh, is owned by the seller.
Right.
You should not have to look at the permission of the buyer. Because the buyer, their memorandum contract and their land sale contract that deals with that memorandum contract should have, if there's any change to the landing law in it, that should be the that should be between the um buyer and the seller.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
Anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
I think I know who all asked, so probably that one.
Um, and then that probably kind of flows through places. Okay, I'll I'll be quiet for now, since I didn't get to anything else, we will have one more shot at this.
That will be my recommendation, it's mine, is that.
Okay, that will be mine, it's gonna be just the nineteen, yeah.
Yep.
It's like I said, I didn't get through it all. Thank goodness.
So Commissioners, let's see, Commissioner Irons and Commissioner Menace are on on Zoom. Do either of you have any questions, comments, um Commissioner Irons, you might get a fly?
I I don't, thank you Commissioner Tenek for looking that over.
Give me some.
Commissioner Irons, um, that's who's online, right, you might remember, okay. Okay, he's he's busy some. So, um, Commissioner Solana, any any thoughts at this point in time, or you wanna, do you wanna?
I I just have one, pardon me for a question, it might be answered, but we were talking about UEC got some paperwork or something that made them be able to put it in that paper.
Right.
Where in here it said that since they got this piece of paper, they didn't put it in that paper.
You know, that's that's a good, yeah, so on page, let's see, am I finding it again? So it is the language that says on page four point one point twenty-nine, and again, I this is a proposal, so we can refine this language, but the the red text, I don't know if you're virgin, but it's the five, so under D application, one initiation of applications, um little five with a parent, an entity that has the power of eminent domain, the lay into property. We could add to that, um that they've received, you know, that there's a, that that they have to present a court order or something like that, I mean.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking, they need some, something that shows that they are condemning that are eminent away.
Right, yeah, right, not just because I'm O-D, right, I'm O-D and I could, but well, yeah, she could, but she haven't.
Cause they're eminent, yeah.
So, so that's a really good point, um, yes, you could, but you haven't, and until you produce the evidence that you have. Good point, okay, present the forward.
But 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 is that what you said though?
I'm sorry, we have not opened up the record, the public.
I didn't answer his question, yes.
I'm my, okay, my question more or less was the stuff in here, how can they, what, because that's a proposal now.
Right, this is not, this is not our current language, we're looking at how we're gonna change this.
Just trying to learn this.
Mm-hmm.
When you were talking before, said UEC made the application, and nowhere in here does it say, unless you don't have
So.
Did before, they weren't able to put it in, how did they put it, that's not clear, so.
Right.
I understand now they would be able to, right, if we approved this.
When you.
If we approved this, they'd be able to, but before, how are they able to, that's not clear.
Okay, so how we did it, how how the city approached that at a time, and this was before me, so I I can, I only know what I've been able to see as far as what I've been able to put together with the record parts and pieces. Is that they came in and submitted the application for the Tallman property. And as part of that application, okay, so they filled out the application form and UEC signed it. There's no app, there's no signature from the Tallmans, but they submitted as part of that, the, again, I don't recall what the document's called, but it was the decision document around the condemnation from the from the circuit court in rural county.
Cause they got that certificate of need.
Right, and that was, uh, right.
And had the certificate of need. Then the Tallmans basically appealed that and said, no, no, and then they went and got their condemnation from the county.
Right.
What my understanding from you was.
Yep.
I understand, but there was nothing in here before that said that they, that's what I'm, that's where I suck at.
And that's why, that's why I say, through the appeals process, staffs, staff made a recommendation to accept that as an owner's authority. And by the time we got through planning commission and to the city council, the city council basically made an interpretation of our code that said a record owner would also include an entity with condemnation rights. So what we're doing now is saying, okay, we made an interpretation of our code, now let us codify that interpretation. So again, was it it was what it was, again, a lot of that started before I got here, so I can only go back and look at that and say this is, this is what happened, they started the process with all the owners, they didn't have an owner authorization. They withdrew the application for the Tallman property, it went forward with everything else, they came back with the Tallman property with the with the determination from the circuit court that the condemnation had been approved. And and it was that document that the city then proceeded saying, UEC has an interest in that property. They may not be the owner of the underlying, I mean, they may not own the underlying property, but they have an easement right based on that condemnation proceedings. And it was that easement right that we authorized them to move forward and approve the permit. Does that, does that help?
That that helps a little more.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, anybody, any other Commissioners? So Commissioner, um, Solana, um, the 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 three page up there with the kind of the blue text on it. On the front page, it says planning commission meeting with my state. Okay, we are about midway through page two. But I'm gonna ask you to skip under nine, public testimony. Um, the city is the applicant, so we'll skip that one, there's the four bullets there about people wishing to speak. If you would be surprised us to follow through with those, you find it, you see it, okay?
Yeah, so you said, you already did your ask by.
Right, applicant is the city, so there's nothing additional the city would present at this point in time.
So nothing additional from the city, anybody wishes to speak in in favor of the applicant? Anybody on Zoom? Here we go, does anybody wishes to against the applicant?
So we have three parties that I have, I'm following the chat, um, we have Jonathan Tallman, Kelly Doherty, and Sarah Mitchell.
Perfect. Do I think you wanna go first, or you're?
You can do that, you can ask if one of them would like to go first.
If one of you like to go first.
Thank you. Very good question. I am so filled with emotion from from this, because I am so frustrated, it is what it is.
Uh, can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Jonathan Tallman, I'm the owner of the property owner on this. I have asked profusely over and over. I have asked profusely over and over to the city council and the planning commission, please let's sit down and work together. Now, what we're doing is changing rules in the middle of the game after we spent hundreds and thousands of dollars, okay? I have done a public records request to find out how much I served Amy Carla as an employee or a, an agent, I still have that an answer. I've also asked to, uh, how much they've spent on Chris Crean on this appeal process for these procedures. This is a giant waste of money. I want you to sit down and go over these things, please, or the right, I'm sorry if I sound sour. I want to sit down and go over these, all right? These issues, I, I welcome, I welcome. Okay, the city planning, um, the one, one issue that I, uh, uh, my first issue that I have, city planning, uh, from, uh, from city manager to city planning. I, the issue that I have is the city manager is directly controlled by city council. If you have the city planning commissioner, it is one below the city manager. There is not a direct bureaucracy recourse of saying, hey, we need to make sure that we do this. It's a chain of command that creates another domino that could be a problem in the future as we get bigger. We need to make sure that the city council has a chain to say, hey, wait a second, we need to change this. Otherwise, there's another level of command, well, then that's what we're seeing at the county level right now with their, um, with their, um, director. That they don't have control over some of the issues, and then when they ran in, it's a big problem, okay? Uh, I, I, I could love to go into it, but I don't want to go into that. Um, days respond, the hundred and twenty days, okay? I know firsthand, um, it, it took nine days, it took nine days for a letter from Portman to Portland to back to here to get a letter. Uh, one of the, the appeals that I did, I didn't even get a letter. So there has to be a better direct, especially can we also put on their email, they will email if their person wants to put on email. We need a better communication of that process to, to, to solidify it, so that is, and it changed from a type one to a type two. Uh, right in the middle of the process, that's another issue that I have on Loop Road. Uh, if, if there's any type of change, the whole thing needs to start over, okay? Um, the, um, so that's what I wanted to afford, um, uh, the fee to appeal, what if I want, okay? Do I get my money back as an appeal of saying, hey, wait, we interpreted this wrong? I think that should be a nice, you know, gesture to say, you know what, we interpreted the code wrong, okay? Uh, uh, I, I think that should be in there, it was two hundred and fifty dollars, all right? Someone needs to take accountability for, for mistake, um, so it doesn't happen again. Uh, the mailing, uh, from two hundred and fifty to a hundred and fifty, uh, feet. Again, I, 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 I really want to be careful with that, especially for me, or less going on with my property, I'd like to keep it at that two hundred and fifty feet. The TSP dealing with this on Loop Road, there was a minor collector, there was a downtown collector, I met with the city, we talked, we said it was this. I got an email correspondence that this is what it was. I am so confused, it will just take a meeting to go over TSP, minor collectors, downtown collectors, and all the different collectors that they're talking about on the data. I, that's why when I, when I did the Loop Road on, on, on the Luba case, I said, okay, how many feet is it? How many acres are you taking it? I'd like to give you this acreage for the right of way. And they said, oh, we'll email to you. So I said, based off of it being seventy-five, then they told me, no, we only want six, but we don't develop it. So you get stuck with doing the rest of the fifteen. And I'm like, wait a second, it is very important because I have to pay or I lose out on that acreage that I lose. Of correspondence back, understanding those TSP, we really have to go over those in fine detail. I was willing and I'm still willing to go over those issues with the city and then the planning commission. I was, I came in here and I was ignored, I was ignored, and got really unwelcome, I felt like that they were gonna call the cops on me. And, and, and I was, I was very, very, very frustrated, um, on that part of it, the, um. Again, I feel, okay, it's not better, I feel, it, I got bulldozed. Take it or leave it offer, okay? Even then, the eminent domain process, the city didn't do all right. First offer was zero, second offer was thirty thousand, third offer was seventy-five thousand. You cannot do an offer unless you get an appraisal, okay? That's a fact. There is no processes and protocols filed, I beg, hey, let's sit down and talk, I know you're doing this wrong, uh, wrong way. I, I, I tried to avoid every step of the way, uh, to, to make it work with the city. And I still want to work with the city involved in it, I'm welcome to work with you, Carla, I really do. Um, uh, now Carla said about, they have never got a owner fee title. That, that there's an issue between easement and an owner fee title. I'm willing to give them an owner fee title, okay? But they have to go in and get an owner fee title, that's where they own their property and they have to pay taxes on it for the rest of their life. I do not want to change the easement part or the eminent domain because I have to pay taxes on it for the rest of my life. I've been told it isn't that much money. I said, great, if it isn't that much money, pay me a down payment of what it's worth till the end of the easement. Well, that's infinity, okay? It's very important, do it the right way, they do not own my property, they're just asking for an easement. You are changing the rules for the eminent domain in the middle of the game. When Carla says, oh, we interpreted, no, she interpreted, it wasn't the city, she interpreted it to the city and said, hey, this is what I'm telling you it is. And it was never, I, I bet, I'm kidding, no, you do not, are not the owner of record. And the question that you asked me was, was absolutely right on. There should have never been a man that shouldn't have denied right then and there and said, let's go back through it. And, and, and not spend all this money with the city, with the, the, the property owner, uh, and with UEC, let's find a way to do it. The city has said that they do not want to be a part of this. By them changing this building code, they are putting themselves in the middle of this. In fact, I can show you with documentation, and I will bring it to the next meeting, where Karen Hattler said they didn't even need this permit. They said, not at all, don't need a permit, just go ahead and do it. Well then, why aren't we even discussing this? Cause they didn't even need a permit, and I know that I brought that up when I talked to about it last time. Um. Uh, again, this whole process needs more transparency, there has been no transparency. I apologize if I, apologize if I, as awkward or, um, trying to. Uh, or trying to find a way, but I'm pleading with you, let's work together. I have, you guys mentioned at that meeting last one about the Blue Bears. This devalues that property of the Blue Bears, cause this could actually benefit the city if we actually did proper planning and had it go down the, the, the utility corridor. But the eminent domain, please do not change that at all. Make them go back and get an owner fee title of the property, which they can do because they have the eminent domain. Uh, what it does is it takes it as a property owner, okay? And as a property owner, on my property, your property inside the city limits, is it now even worth less? Because they can eminent domain and get the permit anytime that they want. I can actually start my whole co-op in eminent domain and get the permit on this. Why would we do this? Why would we give our property rights up so easily like this? It doesn't make sense. Get the value for your property that it's worth, please, I thank you, to look at the flaws to this, and I welcome working with everybody involved here this time, thank you.
Thank you so much. Who would like to ask?
Kelly Doherty, six eight, went to Wilson Lane in Oregon. Um, first I'd just like to say, um, I don't have any problem with changing the, the verbiage from the city manager to the planning director, the planning person, except for maybe on the initiation of the applications. It looks like it may be a problem on one, um, A three, if we wholesale that out. That would be a resolution of the planning commission, permission to change things, and the planning commissioner.
What, what, what page do you want?
Well, I have the old one, so credits, uh, four point one, seven zero zero, under applications, one, three.
Four point one, seven hundred.
So it means D is north.
Is enough.
Okay.
One, if we wholesale city manager for the planning commission, then we have a general problem there. As we have, can be changed by a resolution of the planning commission, or can be changed by the planning commissioner. So it's, it's going to be a problem there if we wholesale that, that verbiage out. So just things that, um, who's, who's able to submit a code amendment? You know, the city council, resolution of the planning department, the property owner, and the city manager. Who benefits from this change? It's certainly not property owners. It's the people that have condemnation, um, powers, it's cities, it's courts, it's utilities, private and public. Um, it is totally against property ownership right now. Um, we don't want to see that, our commissioners work for the people, they don't work for the city, they don't work for UEC. I do have a little bit of a problem with Carla hosting a meeting and doing this as she does contract for UEC and has worked for UEC as a contractor, um, I think that's a little bit of a conflict of interest. Um, I do, I don't want to see her, um. Do the meeting tonight as if, you know, we should add a director to it, um.
I, I figure, see, which part do you have on it? Like, the reading, or script, or?
No. Just providing the dialogue. Why is this being proposed now? Two reasons. I think it's premature, the city's made, you know, their determination of what they thought, but Luba hasn't made that determination yet. Um, I think it's premature to change our development code, when we don't know what Luba's gonna come back and say. If, if, you know, the appeal is, is goes forward, then the city's, um, determination becomes null and void. And if we change it now, before we do the Luba appeal, before we have an answer from Luba. Um, I think you're going to get yourself into more, more problems because then we'll just peel it back to Luba. And we already know what their decision is. We're putting in verbiage development code for condemnation. If good planning is occurring, we should never have a condemnation, never. Morro County, as a county, has never condemned anything. UEC is a public utility. Uh, private utility, I'm sorry, private. They have condemnation powers, they go to UEC. Say it's for good for the people, and we know that it's the good for limited people, it's not good for the public. It's good for themselves, they're private corporation, they make money, they pay dividends. No matter in advance. Shortening of the time constraints on this, I'm, was involved in the Luba case, I don't know how many times we had to extend it because the mail is slow. You know, shortening the mailing times is going to be problematic, Portman says their mail to Portland, it's nine to ten days to come back. We had three days to write appeals to Luba, and so they had to extend it each time, they extended each time, we sent, extended each time. So we really need to look at that, um, as well, as we're, you know, again, it's, it's not, it doesn't help the people again. It's, it's, you know, all of these changes are, are not in our favor. As far as what other counties do, other cities do, I can't find anywhere in there where they have anything about a condemnation or court orders. Um, given to a county, applications for the development of a lot of parcels has to be signed by all legal property owners of that lot or parcel or by a legal authorized representative. Redmond, application requirements be submitted by the property owner or a person who represents in writing that he or she has an authority from the property owner as derived here and to make the application. Uh, Bend, be submitted by the property owner or a person who has written authorization from the property owner as the client term to make the application. Provide proof of ownership in form of a deed or other recorded documentation. Morro County is by a record owner. Names, addresses, telephone numbers, and authorization signatures of all recorded property owners or contract owners. And the name, address, and telephone numbers of the applicant, different from the property owners. City of Pendleton, the owner and contract purchaser or the subject property, or any person authorized in writing to act as the agent for the owner or the contract purchaser. We're writing something in there that's, that no other city has, and why are we doing it? It's not for the people. Okay, we're, we're just going about this. For somebody to come in, put power lines across our properties, take our land, and we can't hide it. Wait for the Luba bill, make sure that what the city did, make sure what the planning department did the first time was correct. And until then, I don't doubt on this city, and I would deny it, and.
Thank you.
So the third person would be Sarah Mitchell, and you do have a letter, um, at your station, it'll receive day at four forty-five.
Uh, Sarah Mitchell, would you like to?
Yes, thank you, trying to unmute myself here. Um, yes, uh, good evening, everyone, Sarah Mitchell, Kellington Law Group. Our address is P O Box two two zero nine Lake Oswego, Oregon. Um, nine seven three oh five, and I'm the attorney for Jonathan Tolman and his entity, First John two seventeen LLC. So, um, without hashing out all the dirty details, I do want to initially clarify some facts here. The court order that you were discussing earlier was just an interim order granted by the Morro County Circuit Court that gave UEC advanced occupancy of an easement, nothing else. It didn't convey the easement to UEC. It did order UEC to pay an estimated amount of just compensation, but final just compensation, that has to be assessed by a jury. That hasn't been paid, there hasn't been a jury trial, I think that's scheduled for next year. But most importantly, there hasn't been a final judgment in that proceeding that results in the court ordering the property to be conveyed. That proceeding is still ongoing. So I do kind of just want to walk back and remind you about two provisions of your code that were at issue there. The record owner issue, and then the authorization issue. So the existing code says that only record owners of property, among others, can file land use applications. And that a record owner is the person whose name is on the most recently recorded deed. And the dispute, as you probably recall, in Tolman's case, was whether UEC qualified as a record owner of the Tolman's property. We've argued that they didn't because UEC's name wasn't on any deed, much less any recorded one. And the second issue dealt with, um, the existing code provision that says, if the applicant isn't the record owner, then they have to provide the signed written authorization of the record owner. The dispute then was whether that circuit court order that I just told you about on advanced occupancy, not a final order that actually appropriated the property to U S, UEC, but an interim order provided that authorization despite Tolman not giving his express written consent. And as you know, the city ended up approving UEC's application anyway. And as Ms. McLean said, the Tolmans appealed that decision to Luba, we've done briefing and oral argument, and now we're waiting on a final decision from Luba. So, uh, that brings us to these proposed code amendments, which according to the staff report are apparently intended to avoid these kind of disputes in the future. But I don't think that they will, and I just think that they're going to cause more problems. Um, and I'll tell you why, so for one, the amendment does nothing to clarify who a record owner is. It actually opens it up to even more dispute by adding, for example, before the phrase persons whose name is on the most recently recorded deed. So if that description is just an example, then what does record owner mean anyway? So if that description is just an example, then what does record owner mean anyway? There's so much more room for dispute. The city interpreted it in the Tolman's case as the owner of a property interest, so long as that property interest is a matter of record. But what does that mean? What's a matter of record? Could some? Person, you know, submit something that looks like a deed with their name on it into the record and say, oh, well, it's in the record now. So it's a, it's a matter of record. I'm the owner. I mean, if anything, the amendment should clarify that record owner really means what it means, that it's the person or entity. Whose name is on the most recently recorded deed in the deed records of Moro County. That's the only category that makes sense. Because it ensures that the true deed owner of the property has control over what happens on their property. And I think the amendment is also unnecessary, given that you're proposing a whole new category of, uh, of authorized. Persons who can submit applications. It's an entity that has the power of eminent domain relating to the property. But what's most troubling about this is that there's also an amendment that eliminates the requirement that the record owner's authorization be provided when submitting the application. So as I read it. The amendments, as they're proposed, would give utilities like U E C or any other entity with the power of eminent domain way more latitude. Than they already have. They wouldn't have to get permission to file a land use application on the landowner's property. Even without initiating an eminent domain proceeding or getting an order, doing anything else. All they would need to show is that they have the power of eminent domain. And, uh, you discussed this earlier. Adding a clause that the entity have some kind of court order. Um, but I would suggest that the court order be the final judgment of the court appropriating the property in the title to the Demer. Now, the staff report says the city wants to see landowners and utilities be able to work collaboratively. But these amendments, again, they give utilities the unilateral authority to file land use applications involving any property without the landowner's consent. So in that regard, I think that the amendments are inconsistent with policies in your comprehensive plan. And that's an approval criteria that you have to consider when adopting these amendments. There are goals in chapter one of your comprehensive plan that include that the city shall strive to provide for widespread citizen involvement, especially in its land use process. To assure effective two-way communication with its citizens and to provide opportunity for citizens to be involved in all phases of land use. Of the planning process, sorry. And these amendments undermine landowner involvement totally in the land use process. There's also a policy in chapter two of your plan that says the city will encourage the development of infill and redevelopment of existing land. In order to balance the need to expand the U G B to meet the city's commercial and housing needs. And the city wouldn't be encouraging that kind of development if developers knew that at any time. A utility or any other entity with the power of eminent domain just file a land use application for the property without even initiating condemnation proceedings. Or making a landowner aware somehow. And I also think that the amendments run the risk of going afoul of O R S two two seven one seven five one. That says only an owner can file an application for a permit. And I know that several other jurisdictions ensure compliance with this statute by requiring the landowner's authorization when the applicant isn't the owner. Or even when the applicant's an entity with the power of eminent domain. And so boardmen should do the same thing. And I urge you to recommend denial of these amendments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So does anybody have any usual tests?
None at this point. To the October, uh, meeting, we will. Do so then.
All right. So with that, uh, close the hearing, or close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Hearing is now closed.
So, um, yeah, we should take action to continue the hearing if that's your desire.
Yeah, just the hearing is closed, but the meeting is not yet. So you guys can decide what you're doing. You want to continue this to the next meeting or not. Uh, the hearing.
Oh, this year.
Yeah.
So now staff can talk for testimony. Staff may be answering questions or issue raised by the testimony.
Again, uh, the intent is to continue this and the staff's not going to respond this evening.
This is planning question. Have any questions with staff? Counsel of the Luba region, is there any discussion by the planning?
Well, if we were going tonight, I would not accept, uh, for the minutes. If that's what you're talking about, we want to discuss that tonight.
If there's any discussion that, uh, kind of what's going forward there. Maybe next course will be moving into the motion for decisions. So would there be other discussion currently with the planning?
I don't have any other discussion.
And staff, I would encourage you, I mean, if you want to not move forward with the owner component of this. There's other things that are being proposed here that are worthy for consideration and continued conversation. So, um, I would encourage you to continue this to October night. Again, I think it's October nineteenth.
And that's what we, so I would continue the public hearing. Are we, so I don't want to do the public hearing, make sure we're not.
You, you can determine if you want to allow additional public testimony.
Your record, the city already in their record. This is up to that. How anxious.
I would just, um. Need to, uh, continue discussion. Into, to October nineteen twenty twenty-two. Which you, he already closed all the, that hearing part of it.
Again, you can choose to, you can choose, and I would encourage you to allow the, the public hearing. For public testimony to be available on October nineteenth. I don't want to stop discussion. I want to encourage that the discussion continue. Excuse me, you're out, you're out.
You're out of order. You cannot talk.
I just, I can't talk to them. I am their staff.
You work for them. They work for you. So.
You want the public hearing continued.
I do.
So that you can.
So that additional people, absolutely. Well, this, this, it's, this city's proposal, so.
So because we're not rebuying.
But there may be other people who are not. I mean, I think you should continue the public hearing and allow public testimony on October nineteenth.
So this, this is your motion.
Right now, let me hear your motion. Go ahead and give me your motion. I want to move to continue, um, discussion until, um, October nineteen twenty twenty-two at seven P M. At the city, uh, boardman to involve counsel.
Sure. So we have a motion forward. We got a sec.
So it fell for no, no seconds. So.
Yes.
So it fell before no, no, no second. So.
So we don't have a second.
Send me another motion from somewhere.
No, I'll, I'll second it. I'm just curious if Sam Irons is still on too.
So we left, so we don't have.
No, Sam is still here.
Yeah, Carla, I'm still here.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Thank you. I, I may, I would like to make a motion to, or sorry, I would like to second Commissioner Aragona's motion.
So, but then.
Certainly. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Jimenez.
Yes.
Commissioner tonight, yes. Commissioner Irons.
Yes.
Commissioner Salata.
Yes.
The motion passed. To continue the discussion on the October nineteen meeting, commission seven P M, working.
All right. So we got planning official report.
No, I was just sharing. Just had two weeks of vacation and I don't know, I think we were here a month ago and it's since then. My grandkids and so I don't know, I just have them. Forty days, I guess maybe it's a little later than normal. So thank you for that.
Great time. I see why I'm back close.
Yeah, so we're already at almost nine. I'm, I'm going to suggest that we, uh, table that. Um, Commissioner Salata and Commissioner tonight, um, you both have the packet there, so the one with the orange cover on it. Um, we'll pick up the others and have those available for the other commissioners, um, at the next meeting. Um, what's included in that packet, um, is the, uh, is available off the state's website. Um, again, it's more about statewide planning goals. Uh, it just goes into a little bit more detail about them. It gives you the goal. It gives you what the rule is around it. It talks about a, a little commentary about it. So, um, just more information to add to the binder that will start the leak for you. We'll probably shift after that discussion, um, into the development code and start talking about it. So, yeah. All right.
Sorry, I apologize. I have a question on the plan. Um, will we get edits of, of just the formatting piece? Um, before the next meeting or?
Are you asking about the, the, the agenda item, the public hearing item?
The comprehensive plan with some of those, uh, formatting edits that Commissioner Tenek, um, recommended. Will those new edits be a part of the version that we'll get in the next meeting? Or will we receive the same comprehensive plan that we got today?
The developing code is all the stuff you mentioned.
Right. So you're trying to have a part, you're trying to have a document of the subject to the public hearing tonight. You're not asking about comprehensive plan. So I'm.
Oh, I apologize for the confusion.
Yes, yes. The intent would be to update that prior to the next meeting and provide to an amended version.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Other comments, uh, sounds as if a person pushing the justice planning mission on matters. Not on age of, uh, two years, five minutes. If written material is provided, at least eight copies of all information will be required from the planning official or reported prior to the meeting. Ask will not be taken in this meeting on the.
Yeah, we have, uh, yeah, both Kelly Dory and Jonathan Tolman filled out both for the public comment as well.
Okay, again, I'm sorry about my frustration. So, for that, uh, are you, uh, sooner you want to go over?
Yeah, but it's actually, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
No, let, let us on that. Probably let you do it.
Thank you, my pleasure. My whole point is to have a meaningful discussion. And when we don't have a meaningful session, we just, oh, we're not, we're not a problem. We're just pushing it forward again, okay? We have to make a decision, yes or no, not push it off again. We saw it on the deal process. What's so frustrating is we have entities, and we've seen this in the Oregon White article, where there's conflict of interest with the people. People are making money, they're doing it for their own enrichments, okay? And I can show you, I've done public records for us to show it, okay? And I'm asking to have a dialogue and a conversation, and I'm not getting any, all right? And I can show you the conflict of interest. I filed probably ten violations there, okay? And I'm still waiting for the process to go through, but when we have that conflict of interest that is rareness at each and every time. I do have issues with it, and it needs to be dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Go.
I just have one short comment. Just so that, so we can, you know, things happen more, that we can address the chair, and the chair can call on us. And we're not, because someone doesn't put their hand up and say that we can't talk. When, when we raise our hand or ask for the chairs, we should talk, which is you grab that. Um, we shouldn't have staff telling us that we are not able to talk. That is completely up to the commission. And when we raise our hand, if you want to call on us, you call on us and we are to sleep.
Thank you for that. Uh, is there any others? Any comments, Mr. or is there?
No, thank you.
Uh, with that, uh, meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-four.